Good evening. Today is Monday, August 13th, 2018, and we're here for the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to welcome, first of all, we have Kate Colberth, our Teacher of the Year, joining the board as the teacher liaison. And I'd also like to thank SRO, School Resource Officer, Mark Drummond from Wyancop Elementary for being here tonight. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk, for representing us so well. Board members, we have the agenda. Because the meeting minutes were not posted until today, the open session minutes, I'd like to move item 5.01 just down to the end of open sessions so we have a chance to all read through those and then we won't delay other folks who are here for other parts of the agenda. So do I have a motion to approve with that change in the agenda?
So moved.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Dr. Kirk made the motion and Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any comments?
Is it 12.03 or...
No, it would be to 9.06, just right before we go into closed session. That way we just won't hold up other people. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes 6-0. We'll move into the recognitions.
Oh, we have to approve the agenda now.
I'm sorry. I was approving it with the amendment. I thought we were okay with that. Okay. So Mr. Schumaker made the motion to approve the amended agenda in a second.
Second.
And Dr. Kirk with a second. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes 6-0 as well. So we have recognitions. And the first up will be Ms. Glenda Jones.
All right, good evening.
Welcome.
Kate Colberth, as you mentioned earlier, has joined us tonight as the board liaison, and I wanted to share a little information about Kate. She's a 5th grade English Language Arts teacher at Wolfmeadow Elementary School. She was named the 2018-19 Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year in a ceremony on Thursday, April 19th, at the Cabarrus Arts Council's Davis Theater. Colberth began her teaching career with CCS in 2010 as a teacher at WM Irvin Elementary School. In 2014, she moved into a lead teacher role at that school, and she joined the Wolfmeadow Elementary School team in 2016. Last year, Colberth decided she missed being with her students daily and she moved back into the classroom full-time. Colberth earned a bachelor's degree in inclusive education and Spanish from Nazareth College of Rochester, a master's degree in reading from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, and a graduate certificate in school leadership from Appalachian State University. In addition to her leadership in the classroom, Colberth has served as a PLC facilitator, school improvement team co-chair, lead mentor, and school improvement team grade level representative. At the district level, Colberth has served on the curriculum writing team and has presented multiple professional development workshops. And I'll just add there that she presented to our first-year teachers this morning and did an awesome job sharing the vision mission for Cabarrus County Schools. Wolfmeadow Elementary School Principal Jennifer Brinson shared these thoughts about Colberth. Kate's most remarkable gift is her ability to balance the science of learning with the art of teaching. She creates classroom experiences and nurtures curiosity, thus allowing her students to become leaders, thinkers, and doers. She teaches her students to set goals, work hard, and celebrate success. Her work is not to impart knowledge, but rather to create the conditions in her classroom where students become inspired to think, grow, and learn. We would like to congratulate and welcome Kate Colberth, our 2018-2019 Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year. Kate will be serving as the teacher representative on the Cabarrus County Board of Education beginning this evening and continuing for the 2018-19 school year. So welcome, Kate.
Thank you, and we will call on you on occasion to share your thoughts. Next, for recognition, we will have the Odyssey of the Mind state champions, Dr. Mary Beth Roth. Good evening, board members. At this time, we are going to have two recognitions. The first team that we want to recognize was the North Carolina state champion for Odyssey of the Mind. This team is from Winkler Middle School, and I'm going to call their names and I'd like to have them come forward, please. Colin Sheets, Ashlyn Shivery, Trey Turzia, Matthew Thornton, Nicholas Tost, Lexi Waller, and advisor coach Eileen Seats. If any of those are present, would you please come forward? They're over here. I was looking this way.
Come right here and stand here. And while we're organizing here, I just want to share that I am the parent of two Odyssey of the Mind alumni who did it for a number of years, and it was a great experience. And I was always amazed of the final product when we went to the presentations competitions.
Congratulations. We know how much hard work you put into that.
Stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
What was the prompt? Do you remember? But do you still do the boss of the wood structure with the weight? Or you did a different part?
Different problem.
Okay, congratulations. 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 The second recognition that we have this evening is also from Winkler Middle School, and this team won the state National History Day Championship. So if these students and their advisor would please come forward. Grace Lynn Donahue, Lindsay Cap, Maggie Louder, Bailey Mitchell, and advisor coach Michael Williams.
Can we explain what the History Day is?
So the National History Day competition is an opportunity for students to research historical topics. The theme last year was conflict and compromise in history. I knew they would know it. And so these guys chose a local history topic. They researched Logan High School, which was the historically African-American high school in Concord that was closed in 1968. They can tell you all about it, but they, in the process of their research, they interviewed folks that were graduates of Logan High School. They visited the sites. They read documents. They were in the public library digging through the archives and the vaults in the public library here in Concord, dug up the whole story, and then we invited the Logan community to come to Winkler, and we hosted a reception for the graduates of the Logan community. And the Logan, we had probably 30 alumni from Logan that came out to meet the girls and view their project. And so they competed in College Park, Maryland at the national competition. So just great job for them.
Okay, and that's, we have a short recognitions area tonight because we're not back in school yet, but next month we'll be back with a full routine. The approval of minutes 5.01 was moved down to 9.06. So we will go on to the reports section. And Ms. Carpenter, the Real School Gardens.
And we have Ms. Cherico with us, and this is a very, very proud moment for me. And I'm going to turn it over to Edna, and she's going, well, you're going to tell them about Glenda and everything, right?
I will. I will. Thank you. I was supposed to be a trio tonight, so I apologize. We had a Target representative and Representative Linda Johnson, who both are, at the last minute, were unable to join me. Apparently, it's back-to-school season at the retail end of things. And Linda wanted me to let you know that she was deeply sorry. Her husband had a stroke two weeks ago, and she's needing to take care of him. So she will be back at a more opportune time when her primary job of being a caregiver subsides a bit. But he's in recovery, so he just needs a little more attention. So are we up? We are up, and down arrow. Okay, so once again, I'm Edna Cherico. I am not an educator. I'm going to tell you that upfront. So I may not be as astute with the education terms as all my esteemed colleagues on either side. So I work with a national nonprofit that has spent the last 15 years working in a very proven environment around outdoor learning. So me personally, after two terms on the Mecklenburg County Commission, which is when I met Carolyn Carpenter, and then 25 years in the commercial real estate brokerage business, I felt a calling to come back and do something that made a difference in the areas where we have strong economic and academic gaps. So two years ago, I joined Real School Gardens, and tonight, we're able to launch our partnership with AT Allen and Bethel Elementary Schools. I want to share just a few slides so that we all are on the same page with what we do to support outdoor learning and then be available to answer any questions. Through this slide, you're going to learn a little bit about our core focus of academics, to be that tool, that additional resource for teachers in Title I schools, to help move that academic needle through helping achieve experiences rather than having all the things in their lives that may not be the same experiences that we've had growing up. So let me show you the slides. This slide helps explain our nationally-recognized five-step model. It's easy for me to share it in a little different venue as a non-educator. So think back for when you were in elementary school and when you had to learn concepts like geometry. I know from my personal experience, I spent a lot of time doing worksheet after worksheet, and it was hard to understand those concepts. In the outdoor learning environment, you would teach geometry through handing the students a tape measure, sending them outside to identify what a rectangle is in nature. Really good use for school garden boxes. And then teaching them the concept of geometry in a real and relevant way to their life. So that's kind of the difference that a lot of us have evolved into in the term experiential learning. We know that school leadership in Cabarrus County and most of the school systems around North Carolina incorporate a lot of experiential learning. And what we offer, as I mentioned, is another tool in those toolboxes that aligns with national research, highlighting two key indicators, student, that lead to student success. And those indicators are teacher's effectiveness and student engagement. This is a summary of our last 15 years and the research that we verify through third-party peer associates. And in more detail, we are able to provide that if you so desire. Now, so instead of the traditional four walls, an outdoor classroom looks like this. We work specifically with Title I students, many of whom have not had the life experiences that we have. Our economically-challenged students and their families seldom have the resources of the transportation to attend those dynamic summer camps or science museums. They often don't experience our wonderful dynamic parks, and they seldom go outside. Now, the seldom go outside doesn't, isn't exclusive to Title I students. We know that we're dealing with a lot of screen time. And a lot of it's really important to our educational success, but some of it needs to be mitigated a little bit. So we create that memorable field trip, and it's an experience that we can create several times a week. So there's no cost to this type of a field trip. We directly align integrated academic standards with a goal of improved academic achievement. We train teachers through our two-year teaching-coaching model that anything they teach inside can be taught outside. Science. Language arts. Math. They snuck in those other slides on me. And many other aspects that get integrated into our curriculum, including nutrition education, which I know is near and dear to Linda Johnson's heart, too, and working with the Dole Research Academy. These lessons are integrated and aligned with North Carolina's essential standards. All teachers at Bethel and AT Allen will be given passwords to have access to our online coaching center. And this is a center that not only has all that curriculum that we were talking about, but it also has essential best practices around taking students outside, classroom management, and maintaining the different aspects of the garden throughout the year. That maintaining of the different aspects of the garden includes a lot of community and parental engagement. So in addition to training and teaching teachers, a lot of schools need to transition their agriculturally-focused school garden into what we call outdoor learning laboratories. We have about 35 recommended outdoor learning laboratories to enhance that teaching experience. Some teachers just don't want to put their hands in the soil, and that's okay. They may want to engage with the weather station or the earth science station or various components that you see within this slide here. But what is really important, and what we encourage and try to work with each school to achieve, is that physical outdoor classroom, that seating area with a whiteboard where you can start and stop each outdoor lesson. Forgive me, I am terribly out of order here. So we continually improve the third-party verification of the outcomes in each element of our programming, and those outcomes, which are being expanded this year to include some strategic evidence planning. They currently include the partner survey of teachers before and after the outdoor teaching experience, an integrated instructional plan with the school, a coaching rubric, and professional development surveys. So at the end of the school year, you as the leadership of the school will receive a comprehensive report on how all of the, both of the schools did, and then the principals will receive their individual report on their achievement in outdoor learning throughout this school year. Now, we were originally just going to do AT Allen, but thanks to Linda Johnson, she was able to find some additional state funds to allow us to also do some professional development training at Bethel Elementary. So we're very excited about that. So with a school in Cabarrus City Schools and two schools here in Cabarrus County, we're now in three school districts. We're also in dialogue to be in about eight to 10 school districts within about another calendar year, so the start of fiscal year '20. What's most important tonight is that you put on your calendars October 10th at 9:00 AM at AT Allen, because that is when our corporate partners from Target Stores, they're one of our national sponsors, will have 30 to 35 of their employees at the school with all the materials and tools that they need to add about eight learning laboratories that are being fine-tuned and identified from those 35 that I mentioned by the school leadership at AT Allen. And in the course of about four to five hours, they will transform their wonderful garden boxes into an outdoor learning campus. So they'll have a wider variety of instructional opportunities at that school as we start their teacher training. And their teacher training will be, they chose to double it, so they're going to do 12 teachers. Normally, we do six teachers. We do a coaching model with them with our lead instructional coach, and we have a bilingual coach that are coming to become the coaches for these two schools. And they will have four to six sessions with these teachers during their class time, and then they'll have a lot of time to plan with them, show them how to use the online coaching center. And at the end of this time period, this one school year, those teachers will become teacher leaders. And we have found that training 12 is a very sustainable model. About 97% of the 140 schools that we have been engaged with in eight states over 15 years are still engaged in outdoor learning, and they're seeing their academic success add up as it's a cumulative process. The skills that the teachers learn during this coaching process for two years stays with them the rest of their lives. So without further ado, I'm going to get out of your way so you can go through the rest of your agenda unless you have some questions. And I do hope to see as many of you as possible the morning of October 10th at AT Allen. Hopefully, the target dog will show up. Any questions?
Well, I just really had the target dog. That's what I'm looking for. The target dog and that day. You don't know how excited I am about this. I have been working on this project or trying to get this off the ground for at least five years. And I am, if I could do a cartwheel, I would do it at this point. I really would. I'm so excited about this. Now, will we do any kind of thing at Bethel? Will we do any kind of, any kind of thing at Bethel?
So you just have to give us a little bit of time now that Bethel's in the training program. My development director has them on the top of his list to find other corporate sponsors to help them do something similar at Bethel. So just give us a little time to do a little arm twisting with our corporate sponsors, and I'm sure we'll figure out by spring something.
Okay, okay.
We've got some national and statewide funders in process, so, and we know...
Well, can we put Chuck's goat with the dog? I know that they were real excited when they saw the goats to start with because AT Allen does have the goats. Maybe we can get a picture of the goat and the dog.
Thank you.
But I really thank you and Crystal for all the help. And the principal, Crystal, thank you for all that you have done to make this happen. I mean, this was just a joint effort on everybody's part. And I think it's going to be just wonderful with, I know I've been out to the facility a couple times, and I know the teachers that I've spoke with and the principal out there now are really excited about this. And I think it will be a wonderful opportunity. And I know a lot of the, the first presentation I saw on what was done out in Texas, what they did with their numbers and everything out there was just astronomical what they did. And I hope we can see that happen with us.
Well, Mrs. Carpenter, I have to tell you, now I understand why you were so excited about this. So thank you for the lovely presentation. I had the chance to go through it before tonight.
I appreciate it.
And I'm anxious to see it. I'm hoping to get there to AT Allen for the project kickoff.
Thank you so much.
I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the coaching center, is that just strictly for the teachers themselves or will the students have access to some aspect of that?
It's designed as a curriculum guides for all. There are videos that are embedded in that that they can show students, but it really is a step-by-step series of curriculum and guidance for the teachers. But it is open to everyone, not just the six teachers or the 12 teachers. Every teacher or leadership person in each of those schools will have access if they so choose.
That's great. And then you were talking about the third-party verification of outcomes. How does that, how does that, what does that look like?
So our surveys and all of our research goes into Excel spreadsheets and online monkey survey, and all of that information goes to peer associates. May go to Project Evident again this year. I haven't gotten an update from our national team on how all of that's being structured. And then they assess the before and after picture, and they provide that analysis. So it's not just us tooting our own horn. We have a third-party verifying it as well.
Wonderful. I'm looking forward to seeing the start. And on the 10th, which is a Wednesday, will others be able to volunteer and assist, to assist the Target folks? Or is that strictly limited to the Target?
Now, because the Targets have made a significant financial investment, they really control, other than they always invite, if you so choose to spend an hour or so and want a power tool, we're happy to accommodate that. But because it is kind of a pay-for-play model, unless it's specifically being asked by the principal as part of their long-term community partners, which we will accommodate, or oftentimes the health department, if they want to be a participant, will let that happen. But other corporate volunteers, we ask them to invest.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Kirk, any comments?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Walter?
I mean, you say the Real School Gardens, but then all these pictures and stuff seems a lot more than just gardens.
It is.
I mean, there's, you said 35 outdoor laboratories. And then how do you, so eight, you said they're putting eight at the school. How many of those are gardens, and what are the other things, or we don't know yet?
The other, well, now, we have a lot of engagement time with the schools. So they take a look at the 35 learning laboratories that we've built in other places around the country, and they kind of choose what best aligns with their instructional plan for this year, and what they feel that their teachers would most readily use. So they kind of choose which learning labs are going to be incorporated. You bring a very good point, and I could be getting a little bit of my national trouble right now because we're a little early, but you're going to see a rebrand in October 10th, and we will no longer be Real School Gardens because that had a tendency to put us in an agricultural bucket, but we'll be rebranding to OutTeach. So some of the materials, you saw a little bit of what that's going to look like. So the focus is on the core mission of new OutTeach being to support teachers in an outdoor experiential learning platform. And the gardens come along for a ride.
So there can be more than eight in the future, or is it just...
Yes, you can build. Once this first phase is completed, we hope to excite the teachers. Every month, they get an email from us mentioning grants, some other ideas. They share best practices when they, all the lead coordinators get together three times a year, which is the last slide here. And it's their garden, and we want them, their outdoor classroom. We want them to take ownership of it and to grow it so it becomes a very dynamic, integral part of their teaching environment.
And this is a program for Title I schools. Is that correct, or could be any others?
Yeah, sometimes if non-Title I schools want to participate, we ask them to participate plus. Participate plus, support a Title I school. Because you know better than I that our non-Title I schools are able to engage parents and raise funds to a level that far surpasses our Title I schools. So nationally, we've made it our mission to support Title I schools.
Okay, and is this, I guess this is a crucial question. If it's successful at these schools, do we expand that to our other Title I schools? Or we don't...
Funding.
It depends, but that's a great question. One thing that you will notice is the schools that we selected are Title I schools that don't already have a program. So right now, all of our other Title I schools have a program such as Balance Calendar, STEM, IB immersion. So AT Allen and Bethel were two, Bethel's a new Title I school this year. Those were our two schools that did not already have a program, and they already had a gardening interest there. So I think the answer is it depends. We certainly don't want to add Real School to schools, Real School Gardens to schools that may not be interested, but I think we're definitely open to that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Powell, anything? Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Cherico, and thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for bringing this to us.
That was one thing that I just wanted to add. That was one thing that was real important when myself and Edna were talking. It was important to have a principal that was enthusiastic about it because that made the program be, I think, would be successful if they were enthusiastic about it. And we found both of those principals were really enthusiastic about it. And I want to thank everybody that was involved with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, for the next report, 6.02, we have a realignment report. Deputy Superintendent Lynn Reimer will introduce our consultant on that project.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, board. Matthew Cropper of Cropper G.I.S. will report tonight on the realignment committee's work. It will detail the work done to date as well as work that's still to be done moving forward. The committee is still on track and focused with the latest school board decisions concerning the delays at West Cabarrus High School and Hickory Ridge Elementary. So I'll turn it over to Matthew.
Yeah, and just for board members, as there may be questions on dates and timing, I kind of drafted a bit of a schedule for us after this. I'll send it out to you tonight for your thoughts based on what he'll be presenting to us and where we go after this meeting. So, welcome, Matthew.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Louder, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and, uh, and speak to you. My purpose of being here tonight is to provide a board with an update on the realignment committee's progress, uh, up to date and then also to give you a little bit of a glimpse and things that are still yet to come and looking forward and, um, as the, as the committee still continues, um, their good work. Just a little bit of a background, uh, we are here, um, and I am here and the realignment committee is, 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 uh, is in, is in progress because the school district is in the midst of a capital plan to add, uh, capacity and support increasing enrollment across the county. Um, the following changes are being made to facilities, uh, effective the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, which is the, which is what the committee is focused on. And this includes the new West Cabarrus High School opens fall twenty twenty, new Hickory Ridge Elementary School, uh, opening fall twenty twenty, and then vacating Beverly Hills Elementary School effective fall two thousand twenty. The committee, uh, was, was focused on these particular, uh, elements of the objectives and, in, in their work as, as, as late as the last committee meeting. So, I can say that the committee is, is up to speed with the latest advancements and what the board, uh, the, what the board's decisions have, uh, how, how the board's decisions have evolved over the last, uh, couple of months. In addition to the new plan construction, there are current imbalances in building utilization across the district. So, some schools are overcrowded and some have some excess space. And so, uh, and in addition to accounting for the new schools, we're also looking at seeing if there's any opportunity to balance utilization at schools, including the middle schools. We're making changes to elementaries, we're making changes to high schools, but we may need to also make changes to middle schools to make sure that we align with the criteria, um, that has been set forth, uh, by, by the school board. So, all of this, uh, really requires a comprehensive look at attendance boundaries and how they are shaped. We were hired, uh, to develop the supporting materials to facilitate this study, um, including development of a ten-year enrollment forecast. We are facilitating a community-based process of developing a realignment plan as we are in the midst of right now and empower the community through this process. The work doesn't only end with committee. We, we really encourage transparency and openness in this process and, uh, allow the public to come observe committee meetings and also the public continues to provide input, um, through different channels, which we have been studying. And so, the committee is really one part and the public is an extension of the committee's work and we're, we're listening to all of them. And then finally, we're here to leverage our expertise as professionals. We've done this a lot of districts across the county, across the, the United States and, uh, we bring a lot of technology and to, so that the, this committee can make accurate and efficient decisions and be well-informed, um, and, and, and work with best practices. So, I wanted to touch on the criteria because I always tell the committee, they're considering a boundary change one way or the other. I always tell the committee and the public to, um, to think about things as it relates to the criteria. And the best plan is going to be one that adheres to these criteria as a whole, um, not focusing on one criteria because if you focus solely on one element of the criteria, you start to deviate from the others. But, um, but the committee has been focused, I'm very proud of their work and these are the criteria that they have been, uh, focusing on. These are to balance school facility utilization, to account for future growth and look at, uh, not only look at where kids currently live, but also where the future growth potential is of residential housing in the county. Close proximity, so students should be assigned to a school closest to their home if at all possible. Maximizing bus, bus efficiencies and transportation of students, so try, trying to make sure that transportation is, is as efficient as possible. Um, and that aligns also with proximity. Trying to get students as close to home as possible provides you some busing efficiency as well. Establish clear feeder patterns and continuity, so, so looking at the transition of a, of a school from elementary to middle and then middle to high school and making sure that, um, we've been, we've been studying data that helps us with feeder patterns. It's the common term. If a elementary school does get split to two middle schools, how many students are getting split and what's the percentage of that split? We're, we're really red-flagging areas that have very small percentage splits, uh, trying to have, if a school does need to be split, it's best to split it in half so that the students, when they go to the next level, they have, uh, familiar faces and friends that they made at an earlier phases of their education. So, um, trying to, trying to have a feeder pattern, a good, clean feeder pattern is, is certainly something that we have been looking at and studying data on in, in addition to other, other statistics. Allow for highest grade at school, uh, current school grandfathering. Now, this is more of a policy decision. It's not really something that the committee is focused on. Grandfathering is something that's really, uh, decisions that are made at the level beyond the committee. And I tell the committee that, you know, uh, they talk about grandfathering from here to there, but it's really not something that they have the power or, uh, it's the scope to, to, to make changes to. And so, but the grandfathering policy that's in place by the school board is to allow for students who will be in the fifth or eighth grades in the first school year of realignment to stay at their current school. However, transportation will not be provided for these students. Rising twelfth graders must stay at their current school since there's not a senior class the first year of West Cabarrus High School. And the committee is certainly aware of this and, um, and, and, um, so that they're informed on this part. Another criteria is to minimize the impact on students. So, and with any option that the committee is exploring, they're looking at how many students have been impacted, how many students are moving from school to school and trying to look at the impacts and try to minimize that if possible. And then consider economic, cultural, and ethnic diversity. Uh, we've been providing demographic statistics, um, and information for their benefit so they can see what the impact would be on demographics with any particular option that's being, um, that's being considered. Make every effort to establish contiguous zones, so don't create satellite areas and say, don't skip over a tenant zone and, and assign a subdivision or, um, a community to a school that's not connected to the main zone that the school surrounds. Uh, and they have not, they have not created any contiguous zones as part of this process. It's something that they are focused on and that aligns again with transportation and proximity as well. And then using major roads and natural boundaries wherever feasible to define a tenant zone. So, try to draw the lines along, uh, uh, logical areas, major roads, railroads and rivers, things that can be easily identified. If you try to describe how a boundary is shaped verbally, uh, you know, if you could do it, if you could say it verbally, then it's actually a pretty efficient zone that follows major roads and other things. But again, it's, uh, though they, the committee tries to adhere to these criteria if at all possible. They're focused on all these criteria as a whole and they're aware that not, that in every scenario they look at, there's pros and cons and there are some things where, where they feel like they wish they could make it better, but, um, but there, there is a cause and effect with any type of, uh, any type of boundary adjustment. But I'm really confident in their work and, uh, and proud of the work that they've done so far and, uh, as far as they've come so far and, um, with a focus on these criteria. So, we, uh, I'm going to break this down into four phases, uh, for the, of student realignment project. We collected the data, um, and continue to collect data. We're analyzing that information, uh, putting together options with the, uh, with the committee and then also engaging the public through a, through a, a structured process. So, we collected information from the school district, uh, we got student databases from the districts that we can map out every student and know where the students live. And then we can count students on any particular street and that, um, that helps the committee be informed of how many students live in various areas if they were to move, um, uh, communities to one school or the other. City and county sources have been very useful, addressing data, property lines. They've also provided, uh, ongoing future development data so we could see where, where future developed, uh, residential developments are being approved. And then the Census Bureau was helpful, has been helpful for, to great, to look at the base population profiles, uh, which helped drive some of the population enrollment forecasting work. And then IRS is helpful for county-level migration, which was more focused on the, uh, the demographic study, which prefaced the realignment work, but, um, but still, it's another data set that the, that, um, that we had at our, have at our fingertips. We put all this information together. As I said, a ten-year population enrollment study and that information has been shared with the committee. And that information is also available online, uh, so that the public can, can, can observe and, and read all, all the stuff that the committee is reading. We took all this information, we put it into a mapping format so that we can align and overlay different, different elements of data and understand how they relate to each other, which we've been working through with, with this committee. You'll probably hear, if you see emails, you get emails from your constituents, things about planning blocks. I, I live in planning block seventy-seven, whatever a planning block may be. Um, and, and these planning blocks basically are, we take that mapping data that we, we geocode every student's address and it, when we first do that, it shows up as a dot on the map. But in order to protect students' privacy and also to, uh, to provide it more in aggregate form, we create what we call planning blocks. So, each planning block, um, has a count on it, it has a planning block ID number and which the committee have been using and helping us reference areas so we can identify where they're talking about. And then also a count that shows the number of students that live in each planning block. And these are the students that go to Cabarrus County Schools. So, the committee's aware, um, if, or the public is aware, if, if they're looking at some statistics on a utilization of a school, they're thinking, what if we move this planning block over here to this school? Well, that planning block may have, uh, thirty-eight kids or it may have four kids and they, they can understand what the impact would be if they move a planning block one way or the other. And this kind of empowers the committee to be able to do some homework with, with me not at, at the meeting and also the public too, to understand various densities of, of students in different neighborhoods and, uh, and communities. I should say these planning blocks are, uh, they were developed by us in-house, um, as a starting point, but the planning blocks are certainly able to be modified. Uh, we continue to get feedback from the public as it relates to planning blocks. Uh, most recently, there's one planning block that cuts off a street, um, one subdivision and it's incorporated into another subdivision that was unintentional. And these are, these are, these are adjustments that we can still make and that we, I'm certain that we will make, uh, to help align with the overall criteria. So, um, so, no, planning blocks are not set in stone. They can be modified or merged or further divided if, if we feel like, the committee feels like it's going to bring them closer to adhering to the criteria. The committee member, members have been provided with a background report. It was basically a starting document that gives a lot of the, uh, the baseline information, um, enrollment capacities of buildings, um, a lot of statistics and data and maps for the committee's benefit. Um, and all this is, is available as well for the public. So, anything that's shared with the committee has, has been made available to the public, which they can, um, they can download and review, which I'm, I know that they have. Uh, the public has been very helpful in providing input. We have also created an online map that helps to further inform the committee and the public on the, of the work of the committee. This online map is an interactive map that you can use from any device, a phone or iPad or, um, any, it's cross-compatible, so you can use it on any particular device. And it's, uh, croppermap.com/cabarrus. And this is a, this is a good resource for understanding, um, how the options differ and how different areas are maybe impacted. And I could just, if I could just maybe toggle to the website real quick to, to just give you a little quick preview on the interactive map. It certainly could be useful for the board's benefit as well as the public to see how, how the site, uh, works. So, so this is croppermap.com/cabarrus and you'll notice when it pops up, you see just a map of the district. And if you click on the left, you'll see there's different layers that you can turn on and off. So, um, one of the things, you know, the planning blocks are on here, we have different zoning districts and neighborhoods so that people can see where neighborhoods are. And then all the different options that are being considered, the draft options are, are posted on here. The, the neat thing about this is you can just, uh, as you zoom in to this map, you can use the little plus arrow, usually your mouse wheel would also work. But as you zoom into this map, you can see, uh, different, different parts of the map start, uh, more detail starts to show up. So, I'm going to zoom in a couple more clicks here and you see more street labels start to show up. And if you get in close enough, you can see that, uh, property lines start to show. So, you can see actual parcels and how properties, uh, individual ownership properties, uh, are aligned and, and how those are shaped. And the, the real, the real benefit of this is I'm going to go out to the new school because I know that's an area that has been impacted, the new elementary here. So, zoom in over the new elementary school. And if you, if you look at this, you can turn on different options. So, you can turn on option one. And you can see now there's a green zone around the Hickory Ridge Elementary School in option one. And you can see how it, how it's shaped. You also notice the black outline on the map. That shows you what the current boundaries are. So, you could see how the option deviates from the current boundaries, um, and, and which areas may be impacted as, as it, as it relates to this option. And you could toggle on the different options and see how they differ from, from, uh, from option to option and zoom in and, 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 and look at, look at the communities and turn on the different options. You can see, the colors will show you. And then there's also a legend down on the bottom so that you could see how the ledge, if you're having a question about what the colors mean. Usually, the colors relate to the, to whatever schools, the zone fault, the, the zone envelopes. Another thing that, uh, in addition to being able to view options is this whole planning block, um, component that I was talking about. And these are, if you turn on planning blocks, there's a plus sign here, you have to click on that. But if you click on the top one, it shows your little pink outlines start to show up. And you can look at labels, uh, the, turn on the, the planning block labels, we call them PB labels. And, um, it'll take a second probably for that to, to refresh. But as, when you, when the, when the, the circle stops spinning, you can see it shows you the planning block, uh, labels. And that's what the committee will say, a planning block one twenty-eight, I really think it should go here or there. That helps me hone in on it. Or public gives us input, I can identify exactly what areas' concerns are. And then also the, uh, the K through fifth labels is, that's the one that shows you the number of students that live in each planning block. Um, and we have the same for sixth through eighth and ninth through twelfth grade students. So, that's a really good resource for the public. I encourage the public to use this. Uh, I use it all the time. When I get emails and read, uh, comments from the public, I go to the, to, to the areas of concern. There's also a nice feature here, a, a zoom to neighborhood, um, community. So, you can go look at the different, different neighborhoods and it's a list of neighborhoods that we have derived from the county's, uh, databases, um, from their subdivision data and the parcels. And you can look at any particular subdivision in here. Um, I hope, we hope that all of them are in here. I haven't seen any that have not been in here yet, but if not, um, we'll certainly follow up. But if you click on any particular subdivision on this, um, it zooms to the area and it shows you this, where the subdivision's located. So, you could see the outline of the subdivision and then, um, and then you can look at that and then study their concerns and see how they're impacted, toggling on the options and so on and so forth. So, it's a really good use, really good resource for, uh, for myself, for the committee and also for the public. And I encourage, uh, encourage them to, to use this. And as new options are explored and created and modified, this will continue to be updated throughout the process. So, we could go back to the PowerPoint. Thank you. So, um, we, we created options to be, to begin the process with the commit, for the committee. Um, we did this to really expedite the process and give them, uh, help them hit the ground running. Um, sometimes with a county of this size, it's a very daunting task to, if they had a clean slate. And we, and I just said, okay, create some options for me. So, this, this helps to create, uh, this creates different scenarios for them to react to. And the committee, um, looked at these at the very onset of the process when we first, uh, introduced these baseline options to them and they have made changes to them, modified them throughout the process. So, um, so they were shared at the second meeting and they've had, uh, two meetings after this and have continued to make adjustments to the options. These options were developed with the, the criteria in mind, um, knowing that they still needed work, but, uh, the committee has continued to, to, to benefit the process in giving us, um, modifications based on their, uh, their local knowledge and with a focus on the criteria. Public's a big part of this process, as I mentioned. Uh, it can't be done without them, the way that we do this. And we really appreciate, uh, the work of the public, uh, in addition to the committee. Public have been at all these meetings so far, um, giving us input and also providing, uh, the most, most important part right now is to provide input via an online feedback form, which we continue to get, um, hundreds and hundreds of, of emails are coming through on that, through that channel. We put together a little bit about the committee. We put together a twenty-eight-person committee. I collected all the applications that were provided to the county, uh, to school district and actually mapped out all the applicants. And the most important thing in this is that you have twenty-eight members on a committee. You don't want to have five members or six members all coming from the same street or the same neighborhood. It's important to have geographic distribution and even distribution across the, the county of these committee members. So, if you look at them on a map, the, the, a good committee is one that almost looks like a grid pattern, people coming from all different communities and parts of the county. And I can tell you that we, we did achieve this with this, with this committee. And every time I ask a question about a road in a specific part of the county or something about traffic, the a question about a road, and a specific part of the county, or something about traffic, somebody always speaks up, oh, I live over there, I go shopping over there. And so the committee is really doing a good job in giving us that local input. We selected them based on objectivity, we wanted to make sure that people, encourage the committee to be as objective as possible, that geographic proximity, and then also their ability to attend the meetings. And so I'm really happy with the committee that we have, they're a very productive group. Looking at the timeline, you can see where we are here, we're about halfway through the process, and the committee has come a long way, but there's still work to be done. Like I said, we're only halfway through. We've got four more committee meetings, we've been through four meetings, and we've covered a lot of ground in the first four meetings. Our next engagement session is not actually with the committee, but it's with the public, on August 28th, where we invite the public to come look at some draft maps that the committee has feel, are best adhered to the criteria at this point. They're still in sketch form, the committee knows that these maps don't need to be modified, and that they're drafts, but they wanted, we wanted to provide an update to the public, and get some further input from the public. Ms. Reimer mentioned earlier about, in regards to the timeline of this process, and if the latest advancements with the school board would have any impact on this process. And I feel that this committee is right on track, and they are focused with, on their objectives. And we don't feel like there is a need to, that there should be any impact on the committee's work. They're moving in a good, comfortable pace, nothing feels rushed to them, and we still have time to work on it. So, from my perspective, in my opinion, I don't feel that, speaking primarily to the committee's role in this process, I don't feel like there needs to be any adjustments to the timeline as it relates to the committee. And once, and the committee has one role in this process, once the committee's work is done, that recommendation is set, then it goes to the school board, and the school board then takes it from there. And so, and I think there's going to be some discussion about that, about how that part of the process may be modified. But from the perspective of the committee, I really feel confident that we are on schedule and on time with the work that we've been doing. As I said, we're only halfway. Members of the public are still, you know, they get anxiety when they see their zone, their neighborhood or community being moved. But, you know, I can just, all I can say is that everything is draft, and we're still working through it. The committee knows that they're not going to make everybody happy, somebody is going to have to move. And some people could be unhappy with the way the results come out. But, the committee's focused on doing the best they can in adhering to these criteria. They've met four times since May, many hours working on options, and spent time in between meetings, and emails, and things like that. They reviewed four to five different variations of options so far, started with two options per level, and have expanded beyond that, to four elementary, and then five different middle, high school options they were looking at, as of the last meeting. They've studied all the data and information to help support their decisions, as it relates to the criteria, enrollment, school enrollment capacity data, demographics, feeder pattern information, student impacts, and then ongoing input from the public. So trying not to leave any stone unturned throughout this process. And I can't say it enough, that the options are considered draft throughout this whole process. So, nothing is written in pen or ink, everything is, I'd say, in pencil here, and things are still subject to change. New maps can and will be developed as the committee continues their work, and gets impact from the public, as well as examining all the data and statistics. The public has been providing input throughout the process, and options have changed based on input from the public. One thing to note is that it's not a popularity thing, if we get a hundred comments from one community, that doesn't mean that we need to make a change to the map. Sometimes one person may make a suggestion to a map that drives a change. The public's input is, only drives change if it brings us closer to adhering to the criteria, the overall criteria. So, but it's, the more comments we get, the better, so that we can make sure that we're aware of any concerns the public has.
Yeah, Matthew, if I could, I wanted to say, I've been exploring the realignment site, and there's one file on there that's called Concerns, or something from the public on the right side, it has the word Concerns in it. And you can see all the options, how the committee has addressed, because we've received some of those emails, how the committee has addressed that particular neighborhood's concern, and what the options are.
Yes, I've been taking these, the thousands of emails, and condensing them into a summary document that says, lists the subdivisions and the communities that the concerns are coming from. And as Ms. Furtinbaugh said, I'm color coding them, so that the committee can sort of narrow it down, and be able to focus on, and see in more of a summary form, which has been helpful in the past, and this committee certainly finds it valuable. And that'll continue to be expanded on as we hear more. So the committee has narrowed down to three draft options to present at the August 28th Public Information Session. They are, you could see, the picture on the screen is what we did, we call it a sticker exercise, sometimes it's referred to as dot democracy. It's basically, the committee was given two stickers, each committee member, and they were told to put two stickers on the two options they felt best met the overall objectives and criteria. And this just helps, it's really doesn't, it's not a vote, but it just helps to facilitate the discussion, and see if there's consensus. And the committee, after they saw this, we had a discussion about the options, and they felt that, you'll see, option one only has three stickers, but they felt to take it, because there were elements, take it to the public, because there are elements of the maps that they liked, and they wanted to get feedback from the public on specific elements of the map, and see what the public says. So you'll see, option one is going to be option A at the public meeting on the 28th. Option three is going to be option B, and then option four B will be option C. So, and as of August 28th, there's going to be options A through C. And we rename them, just so it's, so there's no confusion on the numbering, and things like that. And these are the options that the committee is prepared to share on August 28th with the public, and to continue, as they continue to explore the various work. The primary purpose of the August 28th Public Info Session is to give an update to the public on the realignment committee's progress, still draft, subject to change.
Where is that meeting?
That meeting will be at JM Robinson High School, at 6:00 PM. I have some details on that, here in a couple of slides as well. But everything is made public. Everything that we share, everything that the committee has in front of them has been made public. There's a realignment webpage, where all the meeting materials are linked on there, and anybody can go there to review the materials. And I also encourage the board, if you guys want to go look and see some of the latest work the committee's done, you can go to any meeting, look at the PowerPoint on there, and look at the materials, the handouts, the maps. A lot of information available for the Cabarrus County community to study. As I said, the public are welcome to attend committee meetings as observers, but not participants, so as long as they can not impact the progress of the committee at the meetings, they're more than welcome to observe, and they've been great so far. Two public input sessions, information sessions coming up, like I said, the one on August 28th, and there's also another one November 7th. So, you know, there's going to be two of these coming up, to keep giving updates to the public on the draft options that are being considered. I wanted to give, I don't know if I have a slide on this, but the public inputs information session, one of the things is, sometimes you'll see these public information sessions where there's a microphone, people sign up, and people get in, or they get in line to speak at the microphone. That's not the format of this type of, these meetings. This is really a data collection effort, and so the public is being invited to see a presentation, very similar to this presentation I'm giving you now, to inform the public on the progress. And then, once the presentation is done, and we give an overview, we're inviting the public to come out to the main atrium area, where maps, large maps will be posted. And committee members, and staff, and consultants will be around the maps, to talk with committee, to talk with the public, and listen to any of their concerns. So it's not an open mic type format. The public is encouraged to fill out a survey, which will be ready as of that meeting, and that'll be open for one or two weeks, for the public to participate in a survey, that's different from the general feedback form, that it asks questions that align with the overall criteria. So, it's a very effective way to get input, it allows people who couldn't make it to the meeting to participate as well, and it's a very proven way that we've done this in communities across the country. But the public, so far, thousands of emails have been received, and comments, they're constantly being reviewed, and, you know, they really have been helpful. So, sometimes people are scared of the public, and afraid of what people have to say, and my perspective is, the more, the better. We encourage the public to give us input, knowing that they may not all be happy, but the more people that can participate, and be knowledgeable of this, the better, in my opinion. Next steps, August 28th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at JM Robinson High School. Four more meetings for the committee after that, which would be, September 18th will be the next committee's meeting. We'll summarize the public information session results, and provide a report to the committee at that meeting. And they will continue to work on options development. Adjustments could be made, based on the overall criteria. And then, the committee's continuing their work, and they're going to be back to the public on November 7th, to give them another preview of the draft options, the further evolution of the options and maps on November 7th, to share with the public. So, I think I've covered this pretty well. The online survey is a very important part of it, so that although the public is telling us their comments and concerns around the maps, which we definitely want to hear, I will align the committee to encourage them to fill out the survey. That's the most important thing, is put their input on paper, via the survey, the online survey, that, so we can all see a summary of their comments. And with that, that's all I have, be happy to answer any questions.
Is this presentation available to us?
The one I just provided?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I hope so.
Do we have, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's not in Board Docs, but we can get it in there. Mr. Walter, any questions?
I just got the presentation, I just sat through the presentation, so I'm still digesting. So when does it go to the board, when does the board get this information?
Actually, that's in my kind of draft of a calendar here, is December, oh, no, I'm sorry. The last committee meeting is December 4th, and so the presentation to the board will be December 10th.
And that's the presentation of what?
The presentation of the recommendations on behalf of the committee. And at that point, the committee's recommendation is handed to the board, and then that's when...
Is that the recommendation to the high schools, is that the recommendation to the elementary schools, is that all this big realignment with middle schools, everything else? What are we getting?
It's elementary, middle, and high school, it's a full realignment plan that focuses on all three levels.
So you'll have your full realignment plan to us by December?
Yes, sir.
December 10th. And I think if you, I don't know how many of y'all have looked at the website yet, but there is so much information, I just went out and played a little bit with it. There's so much information to kind of watch the evolution, so you can look at, you know, different options, like he was showing, click on the boxes. So I would suggest everybody take a look at that, and see what questions you have coming up from there.
I mean, I've asked for a long time to see the GIS data, the raw data, so I can look at it as well, because, you know, we don't have to necessarily go on these blocks, but I would like to see that geocoded data as well.
Yeah, I think you will see, play with those maps, Rob, you will see everything...
I understand, I understand that, but I would like to see the raw data, so we can look at it as well.
My, and I'm sure you've taken it all in consideration, because I know, every time I seem to look at my computer, we're seeing another new subdivision pop up. And I would hope that this data would have all that into consideration, because now that we pushed out the school another year, we're not under the big pressure we were under. So, you know, now we can kind of get our breath. And so, you know, you were under the, everybody was under the deadline that we had to hurry, hurry and get all this stuff done. So now, we're not under that pressure. So, I just want to make sure all our numbers are going to be good, and so we're not pressured to have to hurry to get everything done. So I want to make sure when we get those numbers, and we get everything done, that they are good. So, I know when we were doing one elementary school, new subdivisions come into play, and we had to expand that school before we even finished it. So we don't want to see us have to move something, or change somebody, because we did, those numbers weren't good.
Absolutely.
And so you're saying, your figures are all going to be good, so we're not going to have to do that, right?
Yes, ma'am, we are trying to be as proactive as possible, balancing the utilization, and then also giving schools extra room to grow, if they're in a high-growth area, and if there's other schools that are forecast, enrollments forecast to decline, committee's considering some of those, they could even have them on the higher side of utilization, impacting fewer students, so that they can draw onto the trend. So they're being, they're looking at current statistics, but they're also being mindful of the future, and with just with that in mind, is trying to make sure that they hold as long as possible.
Thank you.
Saying, there's always those situations, we can't control, that families consolidate into one household, and those sorts of things, but I think as close as the data will allow us. Dr. Kirk?
I reckon I'm surprised that the conclusions and the recommendations of this committee by December of this year will still be in play a year from now, and I'm impressed by that, that nothing's going to change in y'all's recommendation. As a rookie, I don't understand how a year that a recommendation made this year is still good twelve months from now, with all the growth that's happening. What am I missing?
Well, you know, the committee has been focused the whole time on the final, once everything is said and done. What is a boundary plan they can recommend, that incorporates all the facility changes that are being planned? So we, from the start, we've been looking at that. The latest changes to the board, basically pushing to fall 2020 instead of 2019. From the committee's perspective, that doesn't have much of an impact, because they were looking at the out year anyway. So, the committee were building a final plan, once everything was completed anyways. There, you know, there is, there is opening in fall 2020, which is one year beyond, but usually these plans hold for a good amount of time, and we wouldn't expect them to have, there to be substantial impacts. We certainly hope you don't have to redo another realignment a year after you approve a comprehensive realignment such as this. So we try to be as proactive as possible, to give schools that cushion to adapt to change, new construction, and things like that, as much as possible. There's some, certain things that we can't control, if we don't know if a major subdivision comes online, things that aren't in our radar. But we're confident that this recommendation that's going to be provided in December is best adheres to the overall criteria, and is as proactive as possible. And, you know, once, so I'm confident that that's going to be the result of this process.
Thank you.
Mr. Schimick?
So I have a couple of questions. First, in the plan that comes out, will that realignment plan be a staged realignment, or will it all occur as like a big bang, and all the realignment happens in one year, or is it happening in a progression status?
That's a good question. We normally align the realignment with the capital plan. So if you had construction occurring in subsequent stages, in multiple years, it would be a phased-in, it would be implemented in steps. The main goal is to only move students once through this process. We don't want to move students to a school, and then two years later, or a year later, when another addition or something gets built, move those students again. We want to try to move a community or student only once. The way things have landed with the capital plan here, everything falls on fall 2020, so the expectation, and from my perspective, is that you... 2020, so the expectation, and, and from my perspective, is that you could do a wholesale adjustment in that, beginning that year. And, you know, you have some time too, as well, as Ms. Carpenter said, you have, you have another year so that you can plan for staffing, and notifying parents, and get everything in line so that you can, you can accomplish that. It is, it is a daunting task for a school district to, to do a comprehensive redistrict, redistricting, realignment, but, but they do it, they do it. I know Union County just did one, that's all three levels, and they're beginning their implementation this year. So districts do do this, and it's a lot to bite off, but, but it's, it's kind of a, it's an efficient way to do it, it's a necessary thing you have to do, and in my opinion, might as well just get it done. And, but if districts want to phase it in, it's something that we could certainly help them with.
The next question I have is, obviously, in the out years, we had some other schools coming online later on in the, the plan. Will you be addressing, like, we have a middle school that's scheduled in a couple of years, like 2022 or 2023, or something like that, but will there be enough in the plan to help guide us as we have to realign that school and blend it into the mix?
This, this takes you to fall 2020, and with the assumption, the building assumptions that we have, the, the new construction and such. It doesn't include other future capital improvements as part of this. So when those come online, which those are five, six, six years, or a good ways down the road still, those, you would have, you will have to take another look at your boundaries when those, those other facilities come online. But we felt that, looking that far out, with as much change that occurs in Cabarrus County with the growth and, and everything, that it may have been too proactive, and you may end up causing more inefficiency in looking that far out, and maybe possibly moving student communities and having to move them again, and so, so, so we're not looking that far out as part of this process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I will send you some suggested dates and see what kind of comments you guys have back and forth on and whatnot, to kind of work around having a new, new board member seated. We may only have one new board member replacing Dr. Kirk's seat, but anything could happen. There's an election between now and then, so I want to make sure we don't have new members coming in, new member or members coming in who are not familiar with the topic as well. So, okay, thank you, Mr. Crapper. Now we will move on to board member training credit summaries, and I'll ask Dr. Kirk to lead us off with his recent training.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Even for those of us who are concerned about racial disparities in American systems and institutions, I must say that those who attended the two-day racial equity workshop were all challenged in our understanding of how racism remains alive and well, advantaging some while harming others. The Racial Equity Institute's two-day training develops the capacity of participants to understand racism in its institutional and structural forms. I think the presenters were even-handed, moving from individual bigotry and bias, expanding the scope of the workshop to present a historical, cultural, structural, and institutional analysis of racism, building our capacity to identify the root causes of disparity, and helping to establish goals and strategies based on that deeper understanding. It was a great two days, about 35 of us or so, I think, from many walks of life. We had law enforcement, health, education, and a lot of others, and we had a pretty eclectic group, a pretty unique one, reflecting pretty much a blend of all the ethnic groups. There were five different ethnic groups represented, so a really healthy discussion, a lot of self-reflection, and it was a good two days. Cannot speak highly enough of the REI workshop, and one which invited a lot of self-examination. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to attend this powerful workshop.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk, and Mrs. Carpenter.
Okay. All right, I've got 49 hours to tell you in 10 minutes, about 49 hours of education I got. Okay. But first of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that, and first of all, I think I will start with my children welfare trauma training that I got, and that happened to be, as I told you earlier, I like to get what I can free, and this training happened to be seven hours of free training. And I would like to recommend this for other board members, if you, this was given to me here in Cabarrus County, and this was actual, it was really, really good training. And two, I was going to, I do have the handouts that I received with this one, and so if any of you would like the actual, the trauma toolkit for educators, I do have that whole pamphlet, plus the, most, all of the materials, and so if you would like a copy of that, I can get her to make this for y'all, if you would like this. But one of the things, the issues for discussion, you know, many children in our community have been exposed to trauma, most involved with the children welfare system have experienced trauma. The examples of trauma affect children's behaviors, development, and relationships. Those of us working with children have families have opportunities to help reduce the short and long-term effects of trauma by understanding how trauma impact children and using trauma information practices. And one of the things within this, they had a form, and it's called, they called it ACE Form, which is Advanced Children Childhood Experiences, and they kind of rate, it was kind of a rating sheet, and they said if children have at least four or more of the ACEs, or they are 32 times more likely to have problems, and they kind of use that as a rating sheet, and it talks about the traumas and how many different trauma-type things children have, and we discussed, they were showing brain diagrams, and how a young child's brain develops differently than a older child, and it got very technical, and it says how, how children deal with trauma differently, and the effects of trauma exposure, how it can change the disposition of a child, their behavior control, their development, how trauma affects them, and like I say, this was a very in-depth type of program, and the long-term effect of childhood trauma. It leads to high-risk or destructive coping behavior. These behaviors place children at high risk for a range of serious mental and physical problems, ranging from alcoholism, drug abuse, depression, suicide attempts, sexual transmitted diseases due to high-risk activities with multiple partners, heart disease, cancer, chronic lung disease, and liver diseases. Now, again, I'm just hitting on some of the high points. Again, this was a very, a seven-hour course, so there was a lot involved with this. Many children in our community have been exposed to trauma, most involve, involvement with children welfare, welfare system have experienced trauma. The experience of trauma affects children's behavior, development, and relationships. Those of us working with children and families have a opportunity to help reduce the short and long-term effect, effects, how trauma impacts children, and using trauma information practices. And basically, what this was, this was attended by some of our teachers and principals, and it's just telling us that we see these children, and when we see these children kind of withdraw, or maybe their behavior, they had been doing great in school, and all of a sudden, they stop. Something's happened to these children, and we just have to see this. Some type of trauma, maybe something's happened at home, but this, this course kind of told you to kind of look for some of these things. And again, if you have opportunity, this was a great learning tool, and like I say, it went really in-depth. So this is one of them, we're gonna put this to the side, now we're gonna change gears here. Next thing that I attended was, and again, this one made me very, very proud of Cabarrus County. I went to the North Carolina Association of School Administrators, and very first thing I found, man, it was great. Cabarrus County, we're great. I have to, I'm very proud of us. I found out we were doing a lot of great things, and we, we're already ahead of the game on a, a lot of things, but this was, the Safe, School Safety Summit, and we did. We were, we were already doing a lot of things, and I am so proud of our system. I mean, we are ahead of the game in doing a lot of other things. We were the first in the state to have, have school nurses. We were the first in the state to have SROs in all our schools. I love it. But we were the first, and, and here we were to have social workers, have, have the team in place to help. I mean, we were, we have, we've stepped up. Safety is one of our first things that we, we are, we are really, we, we work very hard to make our schools safe, and we are continuing to work, we're always doing that. But we have, we have been, I cannot say how we always are stepping up to the plate when, you know, when it, when people weren't going after those money for the SROs, we stepped up. We were one of the first ones to go after the state funds to get that. I am going to pass out some of the stuff, if you would. I have made some packets right now for each board member, if you would pass these out. This has got the agenda for this, also, it has got, it shows the legislative, the monies that are available for the legislation this year, the grant monies that's being available, but I made a packet for each of you. This conference was a wonderful conference, we, we hit on a couple of things. One of the speakers that we had was the superintendent, that was the superintendent at Newtown, at Sandy Hook. He was a past, and he was excellent, but he was the speaker there, and he has been asked to speak at many conferences, but he was excellent. And he was talking about lessons learned, that they learned from the shooting at Sandy Hook, and one of the things that he mentioned was the responsibility of the Board of Education, and he fostered the district culture that makes students success and well-being priority, but he says, the responsibilities is develop and maintain policy and procedure for the district based on local needs and requirements. He said, adopt, advocate, and oversee the district's budget, support, and work efficiently with the superintendent, and communicate with other elected officials and community members. He said, that's one of the things that needs to be done with the board, but he said, after the incident at Sandy Hook, he said, he gathered up all the teachers and all the people involved in the incident, and he said, he asked them, what did we learn from this, or what can we take away from this incident that took so many lives and changed their community? And one of the things that, that's really different, you know, they tore down the school completely, and they rebuilt it. Now at Sandy Hook, when those, that school is completely enclosed, and when they go, the students go out on the playground, they go out with armed guards when they go out to play. Now, to me, you, you hate to see that with a kindergartner having to go out with an armed guard to play on the playground, but that's what they do. But from what they learned from that situation is that every door must be locked from the inside. They had to, at Sandy Hook, when that incident took place, they had to go and lock the doors. And one of the things that he made a point of telling us was about two of their teachers, and this is something that really stuck with me. He did have two teachers. One of the teachers was, she took all her students, and took the students, and took them and put them all into a little ba, the little bathroom, and put them all into that little bathroom, and locked that door, but that saved the life of every one of those students, and she locked that, those students in that little bitty bathroom, but that saved the life of all those students. The other teacher was one, as this gunman was shooting, she heard the gunman's gun jam, and when she heard him trying to get the gun unjammed, she thought fast enough to get her students out, and got them out, and run across, she knew that her classroom was gonna be the next classroom he went to, but she thought quick enough to get those students out, and got, took them out the back door and got them out, and that way she saved their lives. But the next thing was, every one of them must be numbered. This again is something that we are looking into and have been looking into, but numbered from the outside, so they know what the numbers are. Every staff member, follow your lead with a high-yield, no-cost mentoring program. Every school building is immediately, immediately understood by at least one safety officer. Every month, you hold a meeting with police chief, and these are some of the things they learned. Every superintendent ensure their board that all staff understand a safety plan, and these are some of the things that he, that they learned during that time. And as I told you about those two teachers, but this was, his, his, his presentation was just wonderful. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you, as I gave you that information about all the programs we have applied for these grants, the other, the last thing on this one, like I say, you see all the wonderful things, but we did have a presentation by our wonderful Amy Louder, and she did an outstanding job, and it was talking about our, our, about the, the thing that we have in place with our, which we do an outstanding job of, is having our team of our student, our school counselors, school psychologists, and our school social worker team, that's, that's also with our school nurse, they bring in our school nurse and our school SRO, their team that we have in place, and she did an outstanding job. And, but she gave, told them all about that, and she did an outstanding job with that. But they, the, the whole conference was really good, but it showed how, how far we are doing and what we're doing in Cabarrus County, being so outstanding. Real quickly, that conference was great, I'm gonna just touch briefly on what we did with SRO. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do it as quickly as possible, but with SOAR Conference, it was really good. We basically, most of all of that was on the safety element, talking about, well, we, we talked on many different things, but basically, it was talking about the, the, the different incidents that have taken place across the United States, and with, one of the questions I have, and I bet, I know one of our members know this, but does anyone know besides, now, Dr. Kirk, you can't answer this, but does anyone know besides Dr. Kirk, does any of our other members know? When was the first school shooting? Does anybody else of our board members know when was the first school shooting? Any other board member? Huh? And everybody says Calabas. No, yeah, it was way before Calabas. The, no, he does know. We, no, the first school shooting, and this is a little, the first school shooting was November the 12th, 1840, at the University of Virginia. So everybody that always is, they think it's something that just recently, this has been going on- going on for quite a while. And the first time you saw a number of fatalities was in August the 1st, 1966, when you saw 17 fatalities and 31 injuries. And this was in, at the University of Texas. So, you didn't start seeing a lot of them. And you see most of this, all, even back in 1840, it was due to bullying back that far. And, and so, the, and I'm bringing this up now because most of the time during this conference, we talked about, about all these sessions, what most of the time these shooters were, most of the time, they're loners, they've been bullied. And I'm bringing this up now because school's getting ready to start. You are going to be receiving a student handbook. Parents, please read your student handbook. There is a section on it, and it's, it's talking about, there's, you're signing, that there's a sheet that says, you're signing, that there's, there's a form on bullying. If you hear your child comes home and says he's been bullied, or somebody says there's been bullying, there's a form that you can fill out. Please go to principals' office, fill out that form, and get it, and fill that out. This is, this is very important. And so, please do that. Another thing that we, we learned, or we were talked about, we talked about drills. They're very important. All staff, everybody's gonna be going through that. That's very important. You need to stay calm during the, uh, drills. Those are very important. The other thing is, it talked about shootings, not just school shootings. Most of them happen in buildings, and about escaping and getting out. I don't know how many of you, without even looking, does, how many of you know how many exits are in this building right now? You probably didn't look. Most people will go out the same way they came in. That's the reason so many people lost their lives at the Pulse nightclub, because they all tried to get out the same exit. You should always be aware of your, your surroundings when you go to a grocery store, to the theater, anywhere. Look at all your exits. That could save your life, save your child's life. So, always be aware of your, she's saying, please hurry up, Carol.
You still have a lot more to go through.
But please be aware of your situation, because it could save your life. Uh, so, please be aware of that. Stay calm during your drills, whether it be a safety, whether it be a, a blackout drill, whether it be a fire drill, but be, please be aware. Again, I could go on for days, but, uh, if you want any of the handouts, again, please, uh, just, is that?
That's the next one.
Is that an extra one? Uh, I do have the other ones. I'd be more than happy to share the one with the, uh, from the guy from, uh, Sandy Hook, uh, but I'll make copies for you. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I could go on for days, but thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thanks, Ms. Carpenter, and good idea, Mr. Walter, to have these little, uh, debriefs. Uh, so, we will now go on to, uh, our comments area and a few notes. Uh, for myself, um, a couple upcoming events. Um, on Saturday, for the WSOC Nine School Tools Project, uh, the Rotary Club and other volunteers will be accepting donations at Walmart Concord Commons on Highway 29, uh, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., along with the Fire Department will be there as well, with the Concord Sa-, or the Fire Safety House, um, and a fire truck, so, to interest the youngsters. Um, on Sunday, August 26th, we invite the community to join us at the dedication of the new Royal Oaks Elementary School at 2:00 p.m. Uh, and that is, uh, again, Sunday, August 26th, 2:00 p.m., uh, at Royal Oaks, at 608 Dakota Street in Conapolis. And the third item, uh, we will be dedicating the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School on Tuesday, August 28th, at 6:00 p.m. So, is that all? Dr. Louder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, we're two weeks away from the start of the 2018-2019 school year for most of our Cabarrus County students. Our early colleges started last week, and our year-round schools started last month. We are very excited about the new school year and look forward to welcoming students and families during open house next week, on August 22nd and August 23rd. You can find new school year information on the back-to-school website, which is accessible from our district website, www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. This week, we are also welcoming our new teachers. This morning, we welcomed about 90 new teachers that the HR department, um, put on to kinda host and begin the orientation process for them. Dr. Hill spoke to that group and did a great job. And as Ms. Jones said earlier, um, Ms. Colberth, um, did an outstanding job this morning with that group, and I really need to steal some of her material for integrating our strategic plan, because she did a great job with that. So, she, she really, um, was outstanding today. Um, one of the highlights of the week will be the new teacher luncheon hosted by the Cabarrus Regional Chamber. We're grateful to the Chamber and the many businesses and organizations that are participating in this year's event. We want to say congratulations to Mount Pleasant High School student Mason Saunders, who was named the National Masonry Champion at the Schools USA National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, earlier this summer, and we look forward to recognizing him at a future board meeting. We also extend congratulations to the Exceptional Children's Department, which recently received a $76,000 grant from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare through the Community Reinvestment Initiative. The grant will be used for FM hearing technology for students with hearing impairment and auditory processing disorders. This is the final week for the Summer Meals Program. Children 18 and younger are eligible, and no identification or reservations are required. Please visit www.cabarrus.k12nc.us/freesummermeals for a list of the sites. Parents also reminded that applications for free and reduced lunch meal benefits during the school year are now being accepted. Apply at www.lunchapplication.com. Contact our school nutrition department at 704-260-5550 if you have any questions. Also, want to say that our district offices and schools have new telephone numbers. With that conversion, the new main number for the district is 704-260-5600. You can find a complete list of the new district and school phone numbers on our website. And lastly, just want to say how we look forward to welcoming everyone back to school on Monday, August 27th.
Yes, Ms. Carpenter?
I do have one, one thing I'd like to bring up. Cabarrus County Fair is coming. Uh, I, I would like to remind everybody that Cabarrus County Fair is coming September the 7th through the 15th, but you can enter, uh, if you go to cabarruscountyfair.com, uh, you have to have your entries in by August the 22nd, by 12:00 p.m. And the reason I'm bringing this up, children can enter, uh, ages five to eight. They get a dollar per entry, you know, for entering things, but you do have, you have your entry forms in by August the 22nd, by 12 o'clock. But that's a dollar. And, but I just wanted to let you know.
When do they deliver their items then?
Uh, you have to drop them off by September the 4th and 5th. You drop them off. But you have to have that form in by August 22nd, 'cause you, you gotta have that form in. Uh, that's why I was mentioning that. But you go to cabarruscountyfair.com to bring up that form. That brings up the catalog and everything, so, 'cause it's all online. Uh, but I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause you gotta have that entry form in, 'cause you can't enter them if you don't have that form. Uh, but that's a way you can get a dollar. Uh, and then there's other categories. Uh, then if you're above eight, then you have to go to the other categories. But it's a lot of fun, and so, come, it's the only place you can see a pig chase a cookie and get roast corn in a foot long. So, come to the fair. Thanks a lot.
I know my children always enjoyed, um, entering things in the fair. So, they would take a 4-H class during the summer, and then they would enter it in whatever category. And it was great fun to get ribbons and things and collect those all the years.
It is, it's, it's a lot of fun.
Okay, we're now moving to our guest speaker section. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign-up will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins. Speakers must sign up with a board clerk no later than the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. And there are additional details about the policy and procedure in the agenda. Minnie, do we have any guest speakers tonight? Okay, thank you. Um, so, we'll move to the consent agenda. Board members, we have 8.01, the approval of the, uh, items placed on the consent agenda at our work session on August 13th, 2018. Do I have the motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schumaker made the motion. Dr. Kirk made the second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0, thank you. Now, move to the action agenda. The first item is to adopt the budget re-, budget resolution for 2018-19. We'll have Ms. Clutz come up to share any additional information.
Yes, thank you. I only received one question since the last meeting regarding the budget, and that question was regarding, uh, DPI's projections versus where we currently are. And so, it is, um, too early to, to know until children show up on the first 10 days. We really don't have a good idea. Um, DPI's projection was 33,0241. Um, our internal projections-
You said 32,000?
33,0241.
241, okay.
Our internal projections were 33,125, and McKibben's projections are 32,841. That's a span of an increase from, anywhere from 340 students to 740 students. So, we hope to fall just short of the 740. 99 short exactly is when I get to keep my money from DPI.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll look forward to updates on that, uh, in our September meetings.
In the September meeting, is when we can provide a better update, yes.
Okay, any other outstanding budget questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the budget resolution for 2018-2019, uh, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Kirk made the motion. Uh, Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes 5-1. Is there anything you wanted to share, Mr. Powell?
Yes, I did, I just don't agree with the, um, what is it, .25% increase in the teacher supplement. I just feel like, uh, we could look through the budget and find more, uh, to do for teachers. But that's not part of our process, so that's okay. I understand.
Okay, even understanding what Ms. Clutz provided last week regarding the county appropriating over a million dollars to cover the state matching raises and increasing the supplement on that eight, uh, 6% increase as well, so.
I have a good understanding of-
Okay.
-exactly where the money's coming from and where we're wasting it within our district. And I wish we would look at some of that waste, but we're not, and that's okay. I understand.
And I would say, if you would like to join the Budget Committee, uh, next year, that might be an option.
The Budget Committee only looks at the expansion budget. There's no process in place to look at existing, um, expenditures.
Yeah, sometimes there is give and take, though, having been at those meetings, saying we're going to reduce this in order to accomplish something else.
I've participated a number of times, um, in years past. I haven't done it in several years, 'cause it's, it's a tremendous commitment for only the expansion budget. Um, but if there's ever a, a committee to examine, um, a variety of other budget items that are not part of the expansion budget, I would be all for it. But to this point, there hasn't been one.
Well, perhaps, um, write up your suggestions and get them to Ms. Clutz and the other board members?
When do we do that? When do we look at a zero-based budget, look through the whole budget? I mean, is that the responsibility of the board to do that, or is it?
No, I will tell you that, um, I asked some years ago, I'll say maybe 10 years ago, that we look at that when we were in a critical, uh, situation with the decline in the economy and what, it probably was right at 10 years ago.
So, we haven't, we haven't looked at the full budget in 10 years?
No, but let me tell you what, what happened out of that, is that so much of our budget is, what I'll call, and Kelly, you can correct me here, mandated items. So, there wasn't a lot of fluff that we could make decisions on. We were down to $6,000 decisions, $15,000 decisions. There weren't enough of those to stop, um, and completely zero-base it, not when you took out the mandated items.
I think it'd probably be worthwhile, at least, looking at it once again, even if there aren't, aren't any, I think. For education purposes, the rest of us should probably be educated on what all those items are.
I'm gonna just add that it's gonna take an excruciating amount of time. And, um, if the board would love to do that, I would love to spend some time with you. Um, but it's gonna take an extreme commitment and a large amount of time.
It already takes, what, four, four full days for the committee?
Uh, to do a zero-base, you're, you're looking at multiple weeks, probably two to three mi-, weeks, constant commitment.
To build it back up from zero.
To build it back up from zero. And you're gonna need staff input, school level input, teacher input. Um, you, you need to think about how much time you're asking. Already, uh, we don't want to pull our teachers out of classrooms right now for our three to four-day budget process. So, do you want to bring principals, assistant principals, teachers, committee members here for three to four weeks, 40 hours a week, to achieve that goal? Not asking you to answer, I'm just saying, that's something you need to think about, if that's the direction that you want me to go in.
I appreciate that input. Maybe that's something we should discuss at our retreat then.
I'm here. I work 40 to 50 hours, 60 hours a week, so, it doesn't matter to me. If you want to make the commitment and come, I'll be here.
And that's the key. The board needs to make the commitment, too, if you want to pursue that, so.
I'm not getting you.
Or, or we could just, or we could just take a poll, and we could find probably $2 million worth of, of fluff to cut out, but that's okay. Maybe that's a different discussion.
Now, Mr. Powell, I sincerely want you to provide to the board and to Ms. Clutz your suggestions, so that there is some substance behind it that can be looked into, 'cause you were an employee, so you may have ideas.
Uh, that's exactly right. That might be, um, a pretty good insight, but, you know, over the past three years, I've given lots of, um, suggestions, and we've, uh, voted on lots of fluffy things, and that's okay. I, I understand. I, I didn't want a discussion. You wanted to discuss it, and that's fine.
No, I would just, I really would like to see your ideas.
I would rather put money in teachers' pockets than to pay for lots of, um, just kind of fluffy expenditures that we go through. And we can, if you, if you want to know, I would certainly be willing to discuss that.
Yeah, I, I-
But I think the teachers-
I really would, just because I had the interest in the zero base, and I saw all of the, um, mandated items, the legalese behind, that you cannot move CTE money to EC and vice versa. There were so many things that, that are legal decisions almost, mandated by DPI or other agencies, federal agencies, um, that it ended up, we were whittled down to very small amounts that we could impact. And we did do some things, but it was very small in the end, so. Okay, we'll go to 9.02, Approval of Policy 3225, 4310, 7320 on second reading, and this is the Technology Responsible Use Policy. Welcome Deputy Superintendent Reimer and Ms. Susan Burns.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is on action tonight. So, uh, Mr. Walter, our board member did have a question about it, sent that question in. It is something that, uh, the committee, the policy committee did look at, as well as, uh, Policy 7335, uh, as asked to be consistent between those two policies, and the committee's recommendation was to, to approve as written.
Mr. Walter, any additional questions or comments?
I mean, I don't object to the entire policy. I don't object to the change, the recent changes. What I don't feel comfortable with is, I don't think's consistent with what we're doing, is, uh, there's a section on employees. There's a, I guess it's the second sentence of the first paragraph under, on page five. And we've had these discussions before, but it says, "Employees may not use personal websites, personal email accounts, or personal social media to communicate regarding school-related matters, or attempt to communicate with other employees or students about school-related matters." Um, I think that hurts collaboration. I think we have a lot of folks that are using social media out there. Uh, I just don't think it's consistent with today's times. So, that's why I'm not comfortable with the policy, and that's why I'm objecting to it. But again, that's my opinion, my interpretations.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll take a motion, uh, to approve Policy 3225, 4312, 7230 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schumaker made the motion. Dr. Kirk made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's four. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay. So, motion, or, policy- So motion, our policy is approved with a motion of 4 to 2. Thank you. Next, we'll have Agenda Item 9.03, the Approval of the School Nutrition Program Procurement Plan. Ms. Dawn Baker, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Last week, I presented the School Nutrition Procurement Plan. Today, I have not received any additional questions from the board members.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the School Nutrition Program Procurement Plan as presented?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Walter made the motion. Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. See, that was painless. We get all the questions out the first week of the work session, as planned.
As planned.
Next, we have Agenda Item 9.04, the Approval of the Food Supplies, Milk, and Chemical Beds.
Madam Chairman, to date, I have not received any additional questions from the board members.
Board members, any questions this evening?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Food Supplies, Milk, and Chemical Beds.
As, as presented in the agenda?
As presented in the agenda, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker made the motion. Dr. Kirk made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 6-0. Thank you. See, all the hard prep work on the prep pays off in the end. Next, we have 9.06, Beginning Teacher Support, and we will have, is Ms. Wood here tonight?
She is not. She's been busy all day with our new teachers, so...
Okay, very good.
I'm here.
So welcome back.
I have not had any questions from board members, and neither has Angie Woods, and we have it here before you tonight for approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
What data do you look at with regard to this program?
I'm sorry?
What data are you looking at with regard to this program, how successful it is? What do you, what do you look at?
So what data are we looking at with regards to the, well, we have a peer review process that's utilized within the region, Mr. Walter, and so that's one thing we look at. We look at teacher turnover. We look at our mentor program, and Angie works with our lead mentors in the district, as well as the mentors at all of the schools. So it's a lot of qualitative data as opposed to quantitative.
But you are looking at turnover rate. How is the turnover with the newer, how is our turnover with regards to the newer teachers?
You know, I'll have to look at that to give you an exact number.
Okay. Just curious to see how effective the program is.
I'd rather look at it and give you an exact number than to guess tonight.
Which is fine, which is fine, just again, seeing how effective our program is with our new teachers.
I know, one comment that I've heard consistently, when I've been able to go to the luncheon, is that some of the teachers who are new, were new in another district at one time, or another couple districts, and they were never treated as well as coming to Cabarrus County. So that was encouraging, and Ms. Colbreth, do you have any insight into that?
Insight on the induction program, or...
Just how you've seen new teachers coming to your school?
I think the mentor program is hugely important. I think that that definitely keeps teachers teaching, and right now in North Carolina, we have a major teacher shortage, and we need to keep teachers teaching, for sure.
So that the starting encouragement is helpful.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
And you've been a mentor as well? Have you been a mentor?
Yeah, I was a mentor, and then I was the lead mentor at Urban, so I kind of ran the program, but also worked with one individual teacher, and we met weekly, and it just is that support the beginning teachers need. It's a really hard job starting out. You don't know really anything, so it's very important to have that support.
Yeah. Mr. Walter, would you like to make the motion that the Beginning Teacher Support Plan be approved?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we approve the Beginning Teacher Support Plan.
See, when you're the last one to comment, I'm going to call in. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Kirk? Made the, what's that? Seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0. Now, we will go back, so that we have an opportunity to read our minutes on the agenda. It is still shown as 5.01, so we'll just pause here for a moment, so we can catch up on reading these.
Are we pausing the recording, or are we, recording silence?
Aren't they just watching?
Put some background music on.
Yeah.
They got background music?
Some Jeopardy music would probably be good.
And Mr. Schwartz, you have reviewed these already?
No. No, we didn't. Two of them.
Okay. What's that? And you're okay with all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, are you ready to vote yet?
Yes.
Just give me a moment to go back. Okay, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings, the business meeting on June 11th, 2018, the June 28th board meeting, and the July 9th board meeting.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, Dr. Kirk made the motion in a second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Walter made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0. Now it is time for us to convene in closed session. We'll thank our viewing audience and those present here tonight. I will take a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, in pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, to review personnel recommendations, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a5, to instruct staff regarding the terms of potential purchase of real property.
So moved.
Motion approved by Mr. Schumaker, seconded by Dr. Kirk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the board is now in closed session. Thank you, and good evening.